Brings us to our next scheduled visitor and guest would be folks from the Marion Group out of Louisville, Kentucky. Mr. James Duffy. Are you ready to make your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please go over to the podium where we can record your comments and your presentation and introduce yourself, if you would, and your companion.
Can I borrow these figures?
Sure. Just turn them around, it'd be perfect.
I'm Kimberly Stevenson. I'm the Vice President of the Development Group.
I'm James Duffy, Development Associate for Marion Group.
We have proposed development.
Actually, could I ask you to step back a little bit where we can pick up your comments on, because the proceedings are recorded and then rebroadcast so that way they can hear what's said.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We've sent the notification that we're required to send to the city already and we had a meeting about 30 days ago and part of the comments were that some of the design elements the city would like to see a little bit more closely related to the historic feel of the downtown, which we hope we've accomplished and we've brought renderings that show that. We do want to clarify again that we are just at the application stage. The application is submitted on October 6th. The notification from Kentucky Housing Corporation is received sometime between February and March but could be as late as March 31st, 2008. So any of the processes where we start to do full plans and specifications and present anything to the city for planning approval or building permits wouldn't be until sometime late summer, early fall of 2018. And so, we brought, this is just, this is sort of a little bit fuzzier but it gives you an idea of the overall site layout with the parking of the buildings, the playground. And then we tried to do close-ups.
While you're doing it, I'd like to explain to folks, both in the audience and, well, watch this. The site that she's referring to would be at the end of Washington Street, between Washington and Jefferson Street, behind the courthouse and where Koi is on the left side and over toward Southern States on the right side. There's a 10-acre tract of ground in there and their proposal was to build this apartment complex in that area.
It's a total of 48 units. So this is just another view of perspective where you would see the property from, with the playground. There would also be a community building that would have the leasing office as well as spots for individuals that live there to rent it for birthday parties, anniversaries, things like that. This is a rear perspective where you can see the balconies and the color scheme, this is the color scheme that we're proposing to sort of try to fit with the navy blues, the grays and the whites, sort of a more traditional look. So the doors that would be the actual interior unit doors to access the units and we're proposing those to all be in like a true navy.
Are these condominiums or apartments or what? They're apartments, okay. And how big? One-bedroom, two-bedroom?
They would be a mix of ones, twos, and threes.
Okay.
And then there's a perspective just more of the front view. And we've got, I think we've provided these to the city via PDF.
Okay.
So you're talking about 48 units but you're going to have some one-bedrooms. I know what we had as far as the notification from the Kentucky House Corporation, it was 36 two-bedroom and 12 three-bedroom, but you're going to have some one-two, one-bedrooms as well.
In our original layout, I think we did have one-bedrooms. The market study may have come back and shown twos and threes.
Twos and threes is what we got originally, but this is the first time I've heard ones, which was a question I was going to ask you, so.
And I apologize, I misspoke. We had, we did a very similar development, I think we explained when we came, that was in West Virginia. We had one-bedroom units in there, but it was because they had a need for the one-bedroom units.
Okay. We may as well, actually. Go ahead.
What pricing range? I know it's not been built yet, so pricing may not be set, but what kind of pricing range do you think on the two and the three bedrooms?
Now, the rents were just updated. Can you remember what the new rents were?
They are 700 for the, or 750 for the three bedrooms and 650 for the two bedrooms. Okay. So you're talking about square footage of 500 and 600 square feet?
No, no, larger than that, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Much like, I mean, 500 square foot is usually barely.
Well, that's kind of an efficiency.
Yeah.
What about?
So we have minimum, we have minimum square footages that we have to do for our submission, but we've never built to just the minimum.
All right. What about the access point, which is going to be coming off of Washington through Main there? That is, maybe I'm wrong, but it's not necessarily in a condition that would allow free ingress and egress for an apartment unit right now, apartment complex.
Well, that would be part of the site work.
Okay.
And we would work with the city to make sure that we were in the most appropriate place, but we did talk about that and we have had our civil engineer do preliminary.
So there is, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
They don't do full, we don't do full-blown plans at this stage, but we did send a civil engineer. He did do a physical site visit and we didn't see anything that we felt would be a barrier that we could never come.
So is there not any ability to have a second outlet anywhere for this property? That it would just be the one in and out?
I don't think we've looked at having two outlets. I don't think we're required to by zoning standards per the civil engineer, but I don't know that we would be opposed to looking at that, but.
I don't think, I think it'd be landlocked.
Right. There'll be a natural.
Yeah, because it's basically, it's surrounded so that Washington Street would be the only.
With this as being just planning stage, have you really considered any other spots for this? Because you're looking at 48 units, that's going to be at least 100 additional cars that are going to try to come out on that intersection, you know, during rush hour. You've got several subdivisions down on 10 that'll be coming out too, because that's like their only route to get out.
So we would for sure look at traffic, but usually what we plan for, for parking is one and a half. We're not planning on two cars for every family, because every family will not have two cars. But for, for the, the planning that we have, what we plan for is one and a half spaces per residential unit.
And you've looked at all the other 10-acre sites that are in the city that.
We did look at some other sites and this was the one that was felt to be most conducive to this development.
Yeah, I'm assuming you're using 1.5 because you've got single parent units.
Well, you'll have all different kinds of families. They won't, all, all families don't come in the same size, so you'll have a mixture within that 48 units. You could have in the two bedrooms, you could have seniors.
Well, the only, yeah, the, the only thing with the, that comes into play with the cars, I think, and I don't want to, I know you all do the demographics and take a look at all, all of the factors there. What we don't have is a very good public transportation system in, you know, that really services this area, which usually increases the number of cars in the apartment complexes. That's what I believe happens. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but.
Usually what we see is the car is, your car possession is driven by your ability to afford more than one vehicle. So typically, families that are going to be in a more, in need of more affordable living arrangements are going to be sharing a vehicle. Some will have two cars, but not all.
Yeah, we're just trying to gauge the number of cars in moving.
And we're happy, I mean, at the point that if we received a funding allocation, you know, we would be happy to work with the city on seeing if there was a need for a second outlet or seeing what the traffic, you know, there are firms that do traffic studies.
Yep.
We haven't had, we don't have that as a requirement for the submission we're doing right now. It's, it wouldn't be something we'd be opposed to doing later, though.
Yeah, I don't think looking for a second means of ingress and egress is going to work, just because I can picture it in my mind right now. You'd have to, you'd have to buy a piece of property and then get.
Get to go through a subdivision to get out.
Well, and then the state, the state would have to approve it with the, you know, the entryway and that's a little bit harder than it would seem to be.
We've done that for new developments in other locations before, so if, if we are funded, that's something that we're happy to look at with the city.
I'd like to go back to the, we discussed the, the number of two and three-bedroom units. Is it the possibility of having one-bedroom units? Because the, I think the one area of our population that, to me, is probably underserved are some of our senior citizens and I could see where there could be a need for one-bedroom units rather than two or threes. We, we have a couple of.
Seniors would also qualify for two-bedroom units, so that if they have family coming in from downtown or they have grandchildren.
Even if, even if it's just one, one senior could qualify for a two-bedroom unit?
Or you could have a senior couple together.
Okay.
When you're talking about qualify, I mean, are we contemplating this to be subsidized housing?
It is not subsidized, but it will have income restrictions.
Okay. And what would the, why would we have income restrictions?
Because of the, the tax credit funding that's associated.
Okay, for the construction.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
So that's what, that's the bricks and sticks.
That's why you're going through.
Right.
Yeah. That's why, I'm just trying to put the picture, picture here.
But it's, it's not associated, it's not project-based.
Yeah.
It's not associated with the housing authority. So it's, it's just the vehicle to provide more affordable housing units, but there are income restrictions that individuals have to qualify in order to reside there.
And that's true regardless of how long the complex is there?
Correct.
And do you, when you want, if you need an increase in rent, do you have to go back and get approval for the increase in the rents?
Our rents, our base rents are set the year that we place in service.
Yeah.
But the, the income guidelines change based on the area median income every year.
So the government then says, here's what you can charge or here's what you can increase the, but here's the income restrictions. We've changed it for two and a three.
It ebbs and flows with your area median income.
All right.
So that it's 60% of what your area median income is.
All right.
And so if your area median income goes up because you have growth in the area, then the rents would go up as well.
The only, you know, I ask that question because quite frankly, it probably will go up because the developments that we've got going on right now.
Yeah, with what's happening.
Result in the, an increase in median housing.
Well, it ensures that you'll have stable workforce housing for individuals that are, are still remaining in the area that may be entry-level firefighters or, you know, other younger folks that said that they can stay in the community and still afford to rent here before maybe they buy their first rental.
Right. Yeah, and I understand the mayor, he's looking at people coming up and coming down and both hitting the.
Do you have any other complexes in the area?
We have a property, we have two properties in Northern Kentucky. One is Losiatt Gardens. It is a senior facility. It's a very traditional senior, 65 and over. It's, it was a historic renovation.
Covington.
In Covington.
Yeah.
And then conveniently about two blocks down, we also did another historic project that is 45 units. Part of it is new construction, part of it is historic and it serves single-parent families pursuing an education and is operated by Northern Kentucky Community Action Commission.
You took over the James Biggs? Is that what you're talking about?
No, it's the Lincoln Grant.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking, well, it's down from Jim. Yeah, the Lincoln. That's what I mean.
Yeah, Lincoln's.
Yeah.
So that, that's, you can Google Lincoln Grant and there's the groundbreaking and it's, it's been very successful and it's a beautiful, beautiful property. We restored the historic theater there, so. We also have properties in Louisville, Pikeville. We've got a property in West Virginia that's, that's got similar, the site was very similar to the site. And it ended up, the, you know, the land that we have is a little bit larger. It makes for more green space and a little bit more of a natural feel, more, more homey because you all have lots of trees and green space.
Okay. Could you apply some numbers? In your, the literature you gave us when you, when you met with this, there's the, I guess the acronym, the AMI, and I guess that's.
That's the average.
Average month, median or month?
Median.
Median? Okay. And for our area, what is, you know what that number is?
I don't know it off the top of my head, but I'm happy to follow up with that.
Okay. And this project is, is oriented towards 60% of whatever that number is? Is that correct?
For the tax credits, you elect either 50% or 60%. For this area, we elected 60%.
Now, is that, I want to say, is that to be the, the average of the entire complex or is that a maximum or?
That's a maximum.
That's a maximum.
So you can have individuals below that. So for instance, most of your senior citizens are going to be well below that. Most of your senior citizens are, can qualify for a 50% or below property because they're on a fixed income.
Okay.
So you could have a single parent that was going to school and they would qualify and likely be below that 60%. So it really is just going to depend on the disposition of the residents that you have in the unit.
And at that income level, they can afford a 650 or 750 a month rent?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Go ahead. Thanks.
And that's, so again, it's, we're at the very preliminary stages. We are seeking a very, a very soft support letter. It can be conditioned upon our coming before planning and receiving our full permits and other items, but we, we hope to have local community buy-in and enthusiasm for the development. We, we hope that the design changes that we made reflect some of the comments that were made at our last meeting. The goal is to be, to be sensitive to what the needs of the community are and have individuals proud and excited to have this development in their community.
How long has the Marion Development Company been around?
We have been around since 2002.
My biggest fear with something like this is, you know, the company starts to build, you've got the shells of it, the economy goes down and there it sits for the next 10 years empty on our, on our landscape. I don't foresee that happening, but that's the reason I'm asking how long the company's been around and what.
We made it through the downturn.
Yeah.
And we're, we're pretty fiscally conservative as a company. We do own the developments that we develop unless it's one of our nonprofit projects like the Lincoln Grant Scholar House. We don't have any ownership interest in that, but because we partnered with that nonprofit to develop it, we stand for the entire compliance period as the asset manager. So we actually do that for free. We don't get paid anything for that. We've got projects down in Louisville where they were placed in service 10 years ago and we still do the oversight of those just to make sure that it's a well-maintained property. I think the city can share our email address. I would stand behind any of our properties. Anyone wants to go visit our properties up in Northern Kentucky or down in Louisville, just let us know. We have well-maintained properties. We try to be very proactive for any of our maintenance or long-term planning because we're, we are the owner. So we're not just developing it, we're going to own it for 15 years. So we have a vested interest in making sure that we have a well-thought-out, well-planned community.
Thank you.
So you say you're going to own it for 15 years. What happens after that?
Well, at the 15, that's the end of the compliance period. We would, then it switches from the partnership with the tax credits and then we just become the sole owner. Because the tax credit compliance period is 15 years.
Okay. Got a.
Wait, is it on the bottom issue or is it first floor below grade or is it three below grade?
The first floor is shown below grade with the retaining wall. And the retaining wall is actually part of the structure.
Do you plan for any elevators in any of those?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you, I have a question. Do you incorporate any SEPTED design work in this, crime prevention through environmental design?
We do. We do lighting, we do security, you know, roads. Some of the landscaping is meant to be, you know, so that you don't have, you don't have dark spots or.
Security cameras monitored by whom?
Monitored by our leasing office and then during, you know, during off-hours, we have a monitoring service that we use.
Is that web-based?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Will you build all the buildings at one time or one individually? You know.
We would build them as soon as. I mean, typically, we do a 12-month construction schedule depending on weather. 48 units, we could do probably new construction in little as nine to 10 months, but you just never know what the weather is going to do. There are certain things that weather will prevent.
So you would expect a 12-month build-out period? Okay. Given that this is, that the piece of property that you're looking at is give or take 10 acres and it's, it's rather challenging from a topographical viewpoint, are those four buildings the only buildings that you would plan to put on that site?
That's our current plan. This is very similar to the parcel that we developed in West Virginia, which is much more challenging from a topography standpoint, but.
This is where the West Virginia one was?
We have, we have what people call rocks, but they were much larger, the, the larger holders. But the, the larger site just made for, for your development. The land is affordable to do the development and it will just be a nicer-looking community. So we'll, we'll really only develop about four or so acres of the site and then the rest of it will be green space. That's why we had talked, I think, about seeing if we wanted to do maybe some park features in coordination with the city.
But it's not your intention to have one complex that's got four buildings and another one that's got four buildings on that same 10-acre site? Okay? Because that could make what Mrs. Nelson referred to, the traffic issue, just that much more worse.
No, you beat down, but it makes it, it makes it a very, you know, you're, as, as an owner, you hope for families to move in and to really take ownership of that community and want to stay there long-term because one of the things that costs an owner is that turnover of residents.
Yeah.
So the nicer your development is and the, the more, the more homey it feels, the longer your residents tend to stay.
Makes sense.
You said that you did look at other sites. There's a site just down the road here that's 9.9 acres and it has access right off of 27. Is.
That was seen as a busy strip that wouldn't be conducive for, for families if you have smaller children.
But it would have better access in and out, is what I see. Be an easier.
I think we were thinking more about what seniors and families might want in the community and that quiet, peaceful neighborhood setting was what we identified would be most conducive to the families that would reside in the development. And they still have extremely close access to all of those services.
I think when we met, we discussed the, the location of public transportation, because that's basically is up and down US 27. There's no public transportation that goes across Main Street and from, from your perspective, that's, that's close enough for your residents who need public transportation?
Yes.
Okay. The, the other thing that crossed my mind is from a shopping standpoint, I believe from where this would be, the, the closest grocery store would be County Market, which is probably three, three and a half miles away. Is that an acceptable distance?
I think for this area, yes.
Okay.
Because this counts as a, as a rural location, so distances and things are, but there are some, some more convenience-related areas, like if you needed to run up and get milk by grab, milk or.
Yeah, there's one south, probably a little over a mile away. Yeah, okay. All right. Thanks.
Mayor, at the appropriate time, I have a couple of comments.
Far away.
I'm always the bad guy. I was at our.
This is our city attorney, so he's the bad guy.
We met. I was the bad guy at our meeting and I'm going to be the bad guy now. This property is zone downtown business. One of the permitted uses in the downtown business zone is multifamily. It does have restrictions on development in the downtown business zone. Because it is a permitted use, if they meet all the qualifications and so on, it goes to planning commission. It will not come back to you.
Correct.
So I know that it's hard for you all. I mean, it's good for you to ask questions, to know what's going on so you can represent your citizens, but you're not going to be formally asked to say yes or no on this project. So as a courtesy, they wanted to come here and, and lay it out to you. It will be the planning commission who will vote on the project, up or down, and typically that's a give-and-take process. I will tell you that the developers did make some changes. I can tell from the architectural renderings, they're different than the ones that we looked at before.
Yeah.
The ones that we looked at before, before, I would characterize as more of a modern structure. This is, I think, an attempt to, to bring some more traditional architecture into it. The planning commission will get the chance. If everything goes well with the developer, with their proposal and their tax credits and funding and so on, they'll have the opportunity to submit full plans to the planning commission. So we need to reframe indicating yes or no at this point in time. You know, you don't want to poo-poo this project. It could turn out to be an asset to the community, but we'll leave that up to the planning commission because that's why you pay them. That's, those are my comments at this point.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to add or?
No, sir.
Anyone else on council, have any questions, comments?
And we're happy to, as a courtesy, to continue to keep the city in, but we don't have, we don't have any reason not to. We're very used to working with the locality as we move towards development, so even if we came back and didn't need your approval, we're happy to get that input.
Well, the planning commission is the city still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone in the audience have a question of our speakers, presenters?
You mentioned four building blocks on there. There's a football.
At the clubhouse.
So you're not, you offer any more amenities type of playground?
The clubhouse is one of the amenities and usually we'll have some type of business center location there. Sometimes we do a fitness center. It sort of just depends on the feedback we get as we develop the property. Usually we'll decide those after we've gotten funding, but usually everyone likes to have a common space that's got, you know, like a kitchenette, things like that for kids' birthday parties, you know, community meetings if the residents wanted to have a resident council neighborhood meetings.
Would there be a swimming pool?
No.
No swimming pool?
How many, how many full-time staff members?
We'll have two. There'll be a maintenance individual, a maintenance tech, and a property manager.
They'd be on-site 24/7?
They will not be, they will not live on-site. They will have regular, it's usually 8:30 to 4:30 or 9:00 by regular business hours. During PISA, they keep a little bit of different hours to meet the families, to get leases signed and things like that, so.
I do like the look of it, though. Kind of reminds me of the.
Well, we try, we added the. Well, we tried, we added the.
The courthouse.
And we took a bunch of pictures of the downtown and tried to really integrate some of that feel into the development.
Looks kind of like the courthouse. It gives me that, does give the courthouse feel to me.
Yeah, columns tend to do that.
It's different than the other one. I, I like it a lot better.
Our, our head will be pleased, he had a few very sick little babies, so.
Will the, will the drives be wide enough for school bus access through the community as opposed to the dropouts?
I know they have to be wide enough for E and S and fire trucks, so I think if they're wide enough for a fire truck, they would be wide enough for school buses. And because usually we'll have the fire trucks come and do a drive through before we do, you know, we'll do our, our ref re, before we do our finish re, usually we have services come and ride through to make sure that.
So we can run a fire truck and an E and S and a school bus through there all at the same time?
You, you want to.
Well, if there's, if there's.
Let me know when you do that, because you guys run over police cars.
They get a fire truck through, I think we get a police cruiser through there. Any other questions of our speakers?
Is that considered, um, private property? Because you're guys are the owners?
Yes.
So the snow removal, that would be your responsibility, not the city's?
Yeah, that's, um.
Good question.
Good, yeah, Washington.
And usually we do post, we have, uh, we have signage that we post in coordination because I think if we have somebody that we want to give a notice to violate or trespassing, it's more of a property management thing, so I could be, this, we can, that there's usually signage, we have to have word of this way, so that law enforcement could actually come and enforce them if it was not supposed to be on property.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Drive safely on your trip back to Louisville.
We'll have a good crack.